I think we are good to go. I think the mics should turn on at some point.
There we go.
There we go, we are live here. Sorry about that. Scared my colleague about gave a heart attack here. Good evening, everyone. I hereby call the Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 Cumberland Town Council meeting to order. Just a few quick notes here. We are meeting on a Tuesday as opposed to our standard charter-directed Mondays that we normally meet on. And we are meeting today out of respect and recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day, which was yesterday. And I, like a few council chairs before me, thought it was appropriate to just take a moment to recognize the fact that the land that we are gathered on and the lands our municipality serves are the ancestral lands of the Wabanaki people. And as we together look to build a community that recognizes the value of each member's varying background, culture, and perspective, we recognize the importance of honoring the Indigenous people, their knowledge, and their collective support of one another. So, thank you to town staff and thank you to all the town councillors to moving schedules around to be able to move the meeting to today in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. We also had an executive session at 6:00 PM with the town attorney regarding some staffing and personnel issues, and now moving into the regular town council meeting here at 7:00. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes. Those are the minutes from September 26th of 2023.
I would move to adopt said minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion on those motions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
One abstention.
Okay, one abstention. Next up is manager's report. We do have some folks who are ill this evening, including our very beloved town manager. So, we've got Chris Bolduc here to kind of fill us in on any issues from a manager's perspective.
I promised Bill I wouldn't speak, but I had to do a few things. The Main Street project, the Main Street sidewalk project is, we met with them today. They're starting to wrap that down. It should be completed up to 90% by November 15th. We've had some supply issues and so about 10% of the project in front of the cemetery will have to be completed in the spring, including the overlay of the entire Main Street. We're hoping to get right out of the gate first thing, soon as the paving plants open, and we'll get that project wrapped up. But all the signs will be up, the crosswalks will be repainted and everything, so it'll be mostly done. Other paving projects in town have also wrapped up, with the exception of a couple streets that we're hoping to get done. But again, it's going to be weather and to see if we can get them done before the paving plants close. If we don't get those done, they'll be done first thing in the spring, and that's Stornaway Drive and Stertiven Drive down on the four side. We do have a couple repair areas that we are going to get done in the next couple weeks on Blanchard Road. There's a section on Blanchard Road from Bruce Hill Road that's starting to peel away, and we're going to be fixing that and paving that. And we're going to be doing some repair work on Range Road. Broad Cove Wharf is officially closed for the season. The ramp went up today and the floats are leaving tomorrow. And I ordered salt, so if there's any inclination that something's coming, winter's on its way, especially when we close the wharf. The Universal Waste Event is going to be held this Saturday, the 14th, at the Public Works Garage from 9:00 to 1:00. I just encourage folks to look on the website for the list of accepted items, so you're not carting back things that we won't accept. And then the last thing, on your October 23rd meeting, Goral Palmer will be back at your meeting for the third and final public hearing on the roundabout. After this public hearing, the information that is derived will be sent to DOT for review. Just wanted to put you on notice about that, but we're going to, we'll get it on the website and get it out way ahead of time, so we have a good turnout for that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Just briefly.
Great, please.
Chris, can you speak to, this past week on social media, there was some nonsense about this being the last bulky waste year. Can you just address that if you?
This bulky item week is not the last. The spring bulky item week will be the last for pickup. We didn't get anyone bid on the two RFPs for the bulky waste that we normally do. The only thing that they would bid on is basically giving us a price for roll-off dumpsters. And if we choose in the future to have roll-off dumpsters someplace and let people bring it, we can, but, so this is not the last one. The one in the spring is the last one. And it's really the last one when you say the traditional, they come to your driveway and pick it up.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Please.
I know this is probably non-traditional, but would it make sense to have the meeting in West Cumberland since the roundabouts over there? To make it accommodating for people? Is that something we've ever done?
We did the last one there.
Yeah, would it make sense? I don't know.
We could do it again.
What?
We could do it again.
Yeah, we had the last one there. Thought it was good.
Yeah.
The only thing, it won't be televised.
Right.
Yeah. Just a thought.
So, something to think about, if you just let us know if that's the way you want to move forward.
Any other questions for Chris? Okay, well, thank you very much. Moving now to public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion comments or topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak during public discussion? Seeing none, please. I believe we all know who you are, but if you don't mind just saying your name and where you live.
I'm Bruce Sherwin Blanchard Road. I'm looking for a little update on the request for proposal, which I noticed on it is now called "The Drown Road Affordable Housing." Where are we on that? There's a few things in there that I haven't seen votes on. Maybe they don't require votes on, but one thing that is said right off early is that the land, we're not going to charge for the land, basically a dollar for 99 years. Is that something that needs to be voted on by the council? Anybody know? Or am I not allowed to ask?
No, you're more than welcome to ask.
Okay, I just wondered, because everybody sort of sat there with no answer.
Yeah, so it's not on the agenda tonight, but I can say in terms of where we are, the RFP has been issued, and I believe the potential candidates, whoever decides to respond to that, I don't know who those would be, would respond by November 2nd is the deadline, I believe, when they need to respond by.
No, that, and that's not what I'm asking.
Yeah, and so whether a vote needs to be had in terms of adding language to an RFP, I would say probably not, but that's something we can certainly check and confirm.
Okay. Another thing that is in there that I wondered if we required a vote is the town is committed to the cost of moving ball fields. Is that another item that you're unsure of about voting, or? It looks like something that should be voted on to me. Involves taxpayer money, et cetera.
Yeah, well, so my understanding is I believe any movement of the ball field, if that was shouldered by the town, would most likely, much of those funds would come through TIF funds. So, I would imagine that would be a vote through a TIF committee that then would bubble itself up to the council to ultimately vote on at the end of the day.
Yeah, so those TIF funds are considered TIF committee funds, not taxpayer, not Town of Cumberland taxpayer funds?
No, the opposite.
They're not collected in the name of the taxpayer?
They are collected by the Town of Cumberland, and at the end of the day, the full council would vote on any movement or appropriation of those funds, regardless of whether the vote initially came from the TIF committee or the Finance Committee or any other subcommittee.
You know, one of my opinions, the TIF, is that's sort of a problem with TIF funds then, in my opinion, for the taxpayers of Cumberland? So, what is the procedure? Again, if we, if some of us residents want to oppose this thing, where do we do that? This proposal, is that proposal going to come up for discussion by the town, public discussion? Before it's voted on, or how does that work?
I believe you had a comment, but yes, I can answer that question.
I think you've been here long enough, Bruce, to see how things happen here.
No, that's not true.
I think it is.
No, I decide that, not you. I decide that, not you.
If you'd let me finish.
Don't bully me, sir.
I'm not bullying you.
You are.
I'm not, you.
I don't understand, okay, I don't.
Every financial decision beyond a certain small amount that the town manager is authorized to make, anything more than that is decided upon by the town council. It doesn't matter what it is, any expenditure.
I honestly did not know that. I mean, I might assume that, but I didn't know that.
So, even if there's a new ball field that's going to be constructed that's a cost to the town, the town council will be voted on that. If the TIF project or if a affordable housing project, any of those things, the full council is going to vote on that.
That wasn't the question, though.
I don't want to use up Bruce's time.
The question is, when do we get a say, the town taxpayers get a say on it?
I think, I think to answer your question, that any of those decisions we make to appropriate those funds can be requested to go to referendum with a certain number of signatures. I know the manager has been looking ahead to see what that might look like and the timeframe for when that will happen. So, I think he's trying to, without speaking for him, I have heard him talk about being transparent about taking this project to referendum if needed. Either one, the affordable housing or?
Okay, so it looks like a done deal reading the proposal. It looks, it looks like the taxpayers don't have a say anymore. I just wonder if that's the case.
That's very much not the case.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, so we have, we've built in multiple town meetings where folks can come and express their opinions. Shirley brought up the referendum option that folks have. Anytime there's an expenditure, I believe it's larger than $100,000 by the town, that can, is obviously subject to referendum. But there are multiple points. I would be happy to send you the timeline when we have those.
I've got a timeline. I think the meeting should have been before now, actually, to explain. It's got two, two things mentioned in the meetings in the proposal that I think the taxpayers should have known well before now. That is, how TIF funds are going to be used in the project and how future property taxes are going to be affected. Those are things that help taxpayers make decisions.
Of course, and those will be discussed. We are out of the five minutes, but those will absolutely be topics of discussion as part of our community meetings as we roll those out.
Which are way late in the process, sir. Yes, they are.
Thank you very much for your time. Anyone else from the public have something they would like to raise as part of public discussion for something not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will close public discussion and we will move to legislation and policy. The first item on the agenda here is 23-111, "To Hear a Presentation from Library Director Thomas Bennett Regarding Shell Middens of Casco Bay." Thomas is here with us this evening, and I'm very excited to hear this presentation, and I appreciate you coming and excited to learn about this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, councillors and the public. Before I get into the presentation on shell deposits in Casco Bay, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce the new Assistant Director at Prince Memorial Library, Stacy Mazur. Stacy comes to us from Lane Memorial Library in New Hampshire, and you'll be excited to know she is spearheading the transition to Minerva, which is the library consortium that we hope to join next spring, at least before the end of the fiscal year is when the main Inflonet body has us on the schedule for. So, we're moving towards that now. We've been weeding materials from the library, inventorying, we're getting ready to issue the new cards that we need. So, we'll be well-placed to join the consortium when they are able to transfer us into that system. So, Stacy Mazur.
Welcome, Stacy.
Welcome.
So, this is pretty timely, considering yesterday was Indigenous Peoples' Day. Of course, shell deposits in Casco Bay were put there by the previous occupants of this area, would be the Wabanaki and other native groups. In 1879, in the introduction to his book on the Shell Middens of Omori, Japan, Portland, Maine's old Edward Semester Morse noted that along the eastern coast of the United States, the ocean has been encroaching upon the land, and the shell mounds in Casco Bay are in the process of being wiped, washed away by the waves. We know that sea level rise, heightened storm activities have just gotten worse since then in the 150 or so years since then. But his, what he saw back then is still timely today. And that prompted us at the library, or myself anyway, because of my interest in shell deposits, you know that seven years ago, we dug down at Broad Cove Reserve. That was a great community project. It put shell deposits in the public light. And I think doing that, continuing to do that, highlight these important cultural resources is beneficial for everybody. I, excuse me, wrote a grant last year, the beginning of last year, to the Island Institute to look at climate change in the shell deposits, how the shell deposits can inform us about what's happening with sea level. And there are a number of areas that we're going to focus on, the education, resur surveying some of the sites out there, excavating specific sites, documenting all the shell deposits, and enlisting citizens to act as citizen scientists in monitoring the shell deposits. If you have never seen a shell deposit, this is an excavated 50 by 50 centimeter unit there. So, we're looking down at the bottom of it. You see the shell coming up the sides. What were you looking at? That orange, that is glacial till. So, we know we're down to the bottom of the habitation layer. Anything that is the orange and below it, there were no humans here at, when that was put down. That was from the glacial retreat, left a lot of that glacial till. The natives came in and they started building up this shell deposit. Shell deposits, one of the things we wanted to do is we want to get people to understand to how they can help identify shell deposits. This is a shell deposit on, excuse me, Great Mosher Island in Yarmouth. You can see to the right of the picture, you have shell coming out of that banking. So, that's one way you can tell where a shell deposit is. But you can also look at the vegetation on top of it, very distinctive. And the reason it's distinctive is because the shell deposits change the composition of the soil, make it more alkaline, and therefore they support much different vegetation than you would normally see in Maine. These are what we call shell midden indicator species. If you see these species out there in the Casco Bay or on the shoreline, you can tell, you can have a pretty good sense that there is a shell midden underneath those. And that's just the visual graphic of what those indicator species look like. So, for 185 years, Little Shabig Island was part of Cumberland. It went when Great Shabig left in 2006. We went out there last year and again this year because there's a fantastic shell deposit on Little Shabig Island. This is a picture from 1870, a bird's eye view of Little Shabig. You can see right in the middle, there's a big hotel there. You have, let's see if I can point it here, sorry. Well, you have, you can see where the boat is docked. If you follow that white trail up to the hotel, that's the clamshell walk. They put that in, they used to have huge clam bakes out there. They took all those clam shells and they made a clamshell walk. Here's a picture of a lady going down from the hotel down to the coast to get on the boat. They used to have day trippers go out to Little Shabig, so just some of the European presence out there. Interesting thing is, where the coast is right there, that's where the biggest midden in Casco Bay is. The clamshell walk went right over that midden. Later, there were cottages out there, summer cottages, after the hotel burned down in 1890 around. They had cottages out there through the '30s and '40s. And then, of course, the US Navy took it over in 1942. It was a recreation center, and they also had the firefighting school out there. There's some indication of that. This is a firefighting building that they use to train the Navy firefighters in. It's still out there. If you haven't been to Little Shabig, it's a fantastic place. Like I said, a lot of European history out there. It's still there, you can see it, and it's beautiful. This is a picture, you can see to the right of the picture there, you have those piers coming up. That's where the clamshell walk ended and the pier, the boats would come up. And later, it was reused when the Navy were docking their ships there. They put in a new pier and a new walk. Now, I said that that was part of where the midden is. This is a picture from 1968. Paul Barker from the Gorham State Teachers College and his class went out there and they conducted an excavation out there. And of course, in 1978, we all know about the northeast blizzard of February 7th that really hammered the islands in Casco Bay. You look at that bank right there, and it was totally destroyed by the winds. By the time the blizzard got up here, there wasn't much rain, snow left, but it was a very, it was a super windstorm. Bob, you may remember it. I don't know, a lot of people do remember it. But you can see how destroyed that banking is, and that's where the shell midden is. Excuse me. But the bank looks pretty good now. This is a picture looking directly at that bank. That's where the shell midden is, right up on top there. You can see it once you get on top there, right where you have one of the paths on, you know, there's a lot of paths out there for walking around. The shell midden is right between the path and the sea. And this is just a picture of my crew digging in the shell midden, one of the units that we did out there. So, that was last year when we got the grant from the Island Institute. We did a number of things to heighten awareness about shell deposits in Casco Bay and why they're important. This year, I got a grant from the Maine Sea Grant, and I was able to hire Isla Robinson. She's, she was a sophomore at Greeley High School when I hired her. She's now at Casco Bay High School, a junior. She's been working on this project diligently. She volunteered for about a year, then I was able to hire her. And what she did is she, that's the, that excavator unit we did. When we excavate these, we save all the shell hinges. That tells us about how important shells were in the diet, because we get shell hinges, we get bone, we get mammal, bird, fish, and we can look at their diet. And by looking at the number of shell represented in any one of these excavation units, we can say how important the different aspects of their diet were. And this also tells us, if we look, if we do a transect and look at the midden and see where the densest area of shell deposit is, then that can direct our future excavations. So, this year, we got the grant from the Maine Sea Grant, and one of the things that we said we would do is we would take shell samples from a number of sites out in Casco Bay, and we'd have them analyzed for Delta 13 carbon and Delta 18 oxygen. And what scientists can do with this is tell us how acidic and how warm Casco Bay was when these shells were deposited. You can see that we have these different temperatures over on the right from the different, the different islands out there. The thing that's missing here and that we hope to get another grant for is to do radiocarbon dating, so we can say, well, the first Little Shabig sample is from 1,000 years ago. From 2,000 years ago, it's this. And what we want to do, be able to do, is a carbon, stable carbon isotope range for all of Casco Bay dated, so we have a sense of what has the ocean, what has Casco Bay been going through over the past 1, 2, 3,000 years? And where is it now? And where are we thinking that it might go next? Based on these figures and the ones that colleagues in Casco Baykeeper, they are sampling this all the time, Gulf of Maine Research Institute. This can add to that information. Couple of other things that we can do. This is a picture that Edward Sylvester Morse, I mentioned him, he dug on Goose Island in 1868. And one of his first observations was that there was a type of land snail in the midden that indicated a different environment than the one that he currently was working in. So, he was doing environmental reconstruction based on the findings in these shell mids. Very cool stuff. Another thing, this is a sea mink. Sea minks have been extinct since about 1880. The last one was seen on an island off the Maine coast around 1880. We found sea mink mandibles out at Little Shabig Island. We sent them to a group of scientists who are working on sea mink and a couple of other mammals, how they may have changed based on the fur trade in the 16, 17, 1800s. They don't, there are no current sea minks, so they have to depend on archaeological samples to get DNA, so they can look at the changes in that DNA over time. So, again, these shell deposits give us information about diet, environmental reconstruction, biological reconstruction of other animal species, other things of that sort. Just some of the crew. We had one of the thing, as I mentioned, we enlisted citizen volunteers. People came out and volunteered on a regular basis, and it was really great. We also had young scientists working. You can see these gentlemen are counting shell hinges right there, adding to the data. Presented to a number of groups. This is the group out on Great Shabig Island, just educating them again about the shell deposits. We also presented to the Maine Coast Heritage Trust, Maine Archaeological Society, did a couple of libraries, just getting out there again and informing people about these shell deposits. And I just want to thank the Island Institute and Maine Sea Grant for supporting this project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you folks may have.
Looks like we've got one, go ahead.
So, the diet of clams, they, what we typically call a steamer clam or a soup clam, cohog clam, or variety?
Softshell clam, mostly. So, around 4,000 years ago, the tidal amplitude in Casco Bay changed significantly from about one foot to what it is now. That brought in a lot of colder water and changed the clam population from cohog and oyster to predominantly softshell clam. So, that's mostly what we find in the softshell clam. Sometimes at the bottom, such as at Broad Cove Reserve, we found cohog and oyster, but mostly it's softshell clam.
A follow-up. Any full-size shells found to give you comparison to what the size of the clam was? Were you able to tell that information?
Well, so we have found, we do sometimes find pretty good-sized full clam shells. And they're pretty big, they're pretty big. We also find, so down at Broad Cove Reserve, we found sturgeon that were like two meters, six feet long, which is huge. We found cod, probably 30 or 40-pound cod based on the size of their jaws. You know, we're finding, that's another way that we can use this to recreate the animal populations out there and give us something to compare current populations with to the previous ones. Yes, Shirley?
At one point, Broad Cove was much deeper, correct?
Not necessarily. We think that there was a marsh there that supported warmer water, and that's why we have, we find those oyster and cohog shells much later than what we would expect them to be.
Okay, I was just curious because of the ships that would come in for sailing masts or whatever. How did?
Yeah, I'm not sure how they did that. But I know that they used to.
I just wondered, how deep have you been digging?
Well, down at Broad Cove, yeah, so down at Broad Cove, it was only like 12 inches deep. Little Shabig, some of them go down to 70 or 80 centimeters, so we're getting almost to three feet there. But Broad Cove was relatively shallow.
Please.
So, in our packet, there were two of the articles that were kind of written about this project,
about this project. But one of them, I understand why you'd be looking at the aquatic temperatures and how that changes over time. But just from a knowledge perspective, it looks like you were also looking at salinity differences? Why and how and what is that an indicator of?
Well, salinity and, and acidity, I mean, it's all to look at the changes in Casco Bay over time. Because as the water warms and more acid rain or whatever the source is, it's going to change the composition, not just the, the temperatures, but the chemical composition of the water. And that's going to affect the marine life and potentially other life as well.
I had one basic question, which I think you've kind of answered for me, which was, when you talk about shell deposits, you're talking about natural deposits through tidal activity.
No, these are, these are the remains of native diet.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're finding, we're not just finding, excuse me, bone within those shell deposits, we're finding artifacts as well.
Okay.
So we found pottery out there in, on Little Shabig that just by the type, we can say it's about two thousand years old. And we found other pottery that's a little younger than that, the same down at Broad Cove Reserve. So these are, these are human-made shell deposits based on them going out to these, these places. There, there must have been a, a nice bed of clams out there now, there, or then, there isn't now. There's, you know, mostly oyster farms and other things out there now. But back then, they would have been going to these places. We think they're seasonal occupations, going out there to target the marine resources at various times of the year.
Okay. That's good. Yeah.
Sorry, this is probably another silly question, Thomas, but after you're done with your data analysis, what happens to the middens? What happens to the shells?
The shells that we've excavated?
Yeah.
Do you need some for your garden?
No, I was just wondering if they go back in or if.
No, so typically, when you, when we dig out, we can take the shell out and backfill and it, it looks like we haven't taken anything out because of the way that the ground moves and it's settled over time. But good question, you know, we don't take all of the shell. We pick out the clamshell hinges while we're in the field, so most of the shell does go back in. The reason we do that is because one clamshell hinge represents one whole shell. We don't have to try and piece it together to say, you know, we got minimum number of individual of shells here.
Go ahead.
If we want to learn more about this, will this be available anywhere for us to view, see, read about?
Well, so I, I will write up a report on this. I've already started it. It might eventually, I think you folks saw, one of the articles I did for the Maine Archaeological Society Bulletin. This might be another article of that type. But I'd be happy to share the, the results of, you know, of my report when it, when it's done.
Please do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be very interesting.
Great.
Any other questions from the council? All right, well, Thomas, thank you very much for coming and reporting on this. You're our very own Indiana Jones. I love it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, speaking of shells, I think the next three items on the agenda here relate to shellfish licenses and some changes in the ordinances. I believe we were lucky enough to have Mike Brown here. If you don't mind maybe coming up to the podium and talking with us. Next item on the agenda, these kind of roll all together in some fashion, is 23-112 to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to Chapter 223, Shellfish Conservation of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the Shellfish Conservation Commission. And so, Mike, I appreciate you being here tonight. Maybe if you don't mind giving us a little background context, I know there's been maybe some changes in terms of there were license fees and we're talking about adding them back and there's been kind of a pivot back and forth and maybe a little historical context would be helpful.
For sure. And that's, you know, that spills down into 114. I don't know if it makes sense to consolidate them. I know that from a voting perspective, you have to handle each of the three, but they are really all intertwined. Part of it, it was sort of the last four or five years in the making, but we were also given some pretty direct instructions from the council last year, suggesting that we take a closer look at some particular areas. We were fortunate to partner up with our new town clerk, who's fantastic, fresh set of eyes, and, and walk through the ordinance with both her and members of the Cumberland Police Department and find ways to streamline, clean it up and make it more useful for the people that are actually interacting with that ordinance. And before I get too deep, I do owe Counselor Eads an answer. He, he inquired a year ago, or a little, a little bit less than a year ago, about the recovering shellfish population. And Thomas Bennett, he kind of teed it up for me here nicely. We did a shellfish survey in July. Ari Leach from DMR came down, Ralph Olton was out there, of course, and Matt Merriman. And we went from Town Landing Road north and to be honest with you, the, the populations were abysmal. There were no legal clams found during that shellfish survey. So any anecdotes about recovering populations and some of the digging activity probably has more to do with the ordinance expanding and taking in additional species such as the oysters, the razor clams and the quahogs. So my apologies for the eleven-month delay.
I don't want to get too far up. Mike, are we, or do we have the authority maybe to shut it off for a couple of years? Would that help or is it the green crabs that are doing this or?
Well, I mean, there, there's, there's green crabs, there's ribbon worms, there's ocean acidification, there's warming ocean waters, there's commercial digging pressure. I mean, pick your poison or a convergence of those things. The reality of it is, we're probably looking at a shifting ecology in Casco Bay and the larger, you know, entire coast of Maine. But we're seeing it right here in Cumberland. We're not alone in that respect. We have not yet undertaken any efforts for conservation closures and seeding, but we are in conversations with the Down East Institute about obtaining seed stock and doing a conservation closure to see how our clam flats would respond to that. That's nothing I'm prepared to talk about tonight, but it is something that the Shellfish Commission has undertaken and we look forward to putting something in front of the council soon.
Great.
So with that in mind, the ordinance updates. Couple of areas of clarification, rather than go through page by page, since I cheated and I wrote notes, just sort of a high-level view of what it was we were attempting to do. And then the changes will make sense as they flow through. In some cases, it was removing particular references times six. So it looks a lot more invasive than it actually was. We're eliminating the junior license. We're clarifying that anyone sixteen and younger, actually anyone, any age, including Mr. Vale, is welcome to go down with a licensed digger. Sorry, had to get one more shot in there, as a guest. And the ordinance does allow for that. At the age of sixteen, you're eligible to obtain your own license, but the junior license, it was a wonderful concept. It never really worked in practice because they were just digging as guests with their parents. Senior licenses. Our language was slightly ambiguous in the past, so we added the caveat that those licenses are available to eligible persons as they're available. So it's a little bit more clear that that, it's not that seniors shall get a license, it's that seniors can get a license if one's available at no charge. We eliminated monthly licenses. So for the past decade, I've stood before you and we've been recommending unlimited recreational licenses for residents. With that in mind, and previously we were only charging a conservation fee, there was nobody who was purchasing a monthly residence in lieu of a regular full-season license that was a resident. It was largely available only to non-residents or they were the only people buying them. And it's just an administrative nightmare. We removed height and weight from the requirements. In all honesty, everybody was lying. And no sense in setting them up for perjury. And we do ask for a license number, so the enforcement, they would just look that up and use the height and weight that was listed on your DMV record. We clarified, this here a bit of an homage to former Counselor Harland's story. We clarified what is due and when to both the Town Council and DMR. Historically, in my earlier days as chair, I would do this presentation in December that didn't give some, the opportunity to punt it back and go back to the commission for revision. So we've clarified when it needs to be to the Town Council and when subsequently it has to be submitted to DMR. We removed any reference to the lottery and the names and the hat, et cetera. We have a town clerk, they're governed by the Constitution of Maine. We will let them decide the appropriate lottery mechanism for, for, you know, determining who receives licenses on a non-resident basis. Realistically, in most cases, there's software out there that does it far more expeditiously. Yes?
So I had a question on one of those, on item number, it's six crossed out on page twenty, well, it's 26 in our packet, I don't know what it is. It reads like this. First to residents and then to non-residents in the order in which their names appear on the list prepared by lottery.
So previously.
A list or a lottery or?
Well, the, the lottery was used to generate the list. So in the case, when we're dealing with unlimited, it doesn't really factor in. Down in 114, I'm going to make some license allocations that likely would make a lottery of some version, if endorsed by the council here this evening, necessary for non-resident license applicants. But I leave that to the discretion of the town clerk.
Like an opening date and if you want to, so we have twenty, we're going to have twenty non-resident licenses?
Well, that's to be determined. I'm, the commission is. The commission is recommending twenty non-resident recreational licenses and five.
Sorry.
Oops, sorry. Five senior. So it's actually still 25, which was.
Five senior non-residents.
That are actually allocated as set aside and then next year that will be cleaned up.
So when does the lottery start? Like, let's say we have thirty non-residents who want a license.
They would be eligible on January 2nd. There's a public notice requirement. I'm going to lean into Jen Doten to sort of administer that in accordance with state statute. Generally speaking, the commission doesn't get involved with the actual issuance of non-resident recreational licenses, merely the allocation of them. And actually even that, we don't have say over. We're here to make a recommendation and the council decides.
So does then it become really first come, first served for non-residents? Like, let's say there are twenty, fifteen or, fifteen or so resident, uh, non-residents, but then we have some Airbnbs down at Wildwood and they come up and they want some, they want some non-resident licenses. And we get to twenty or 25, but the 26 rental wants a license to go down to the beach and dig clams.
Well, they'd be disappointed. Based upon the survey, they're not going to get any clams. They might find oysters and razor clams. But you are right, the ordinance does not account for Airbnb accommodations. So a, a.
Well, I'm just, I just used it as an example for a non-resident who might want a license.
No, and historically.
There might be others, transit people come visiting Maine who would like a license.
We, we had a lot of legacy language that was actually built around when Shabig was part of Cumberland and specific provisions for non-resident access and licensing in a period of issuance that commenced in June. That was kind of built around that idea of seasonal tenancy. The ordinance has sort of migrated back towards year-round residence. Tends to be the men and women that are sitting around the table and debating ordinance changes. But certainly that would be within the purview of the council to amend.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, how you'd recommend we handle that? That's, you know, like.
It was not a matter, it was not a subject to discussion by the Shellfish Commission.
Okay.
So I couldn't speak on their behalf for tonight. If there was a desire for any modification, the council could make the appropriate amendment. I can certainly present this back to the commission and I, I will be back in 12 months with an answer for you.
Well, I might be at the next Shellfish meeting because I'm on the, I'm on the commission, but I missed the notification for the first one, so.
We, we look forward to it.
And I'll check with the town clerk to see if that's even an issue, but I'm also on ordinance, so I get kind of nitpicky.
Oh, two bites of the apple.
Ordinances. And are we still, since you brought it up, Cumberland residents are still allowed to dig on Shabig?
That's correct. Cumberland residents are eligible to obtain a Shabig license as a Shabig resident and vice versa. Shabig residents are able to obtain a Town of Cumberland shellfish license as a resident.
They did a recent inventory survey on what it's like out on Shabig?
I do not have that information. I know that a lot of Casco Bay has seen significant decline in shellfish population, particularly softshell clams. That said, Scarborough still has active commercial digging and Yarmouth still has active commercial digging, so.
And they're all going to lie to you anyway about how many clams they dig.
Nothing here.
Because there's nothing there.
Nothing to see.
I got in trouble for saying something last time about the number of clams somewhere from Uncle Robert. So who digs frequently? I'm just saying.
Knowing that you speak so freely, you're welcome at our meetings anytime. I can't get Ralph to tell me any of his spots. The last item that was an ordinance modification proposed was a nod to sustainability. We changed from a copy of the ordinance being provided to every user where we're going to provide website address and say that a copy of the ordinance will be offered to every licensee. So realizing that most people weren't actually bringing that paperwork with them down to the flats. I'm prepared to go right into allocations and fees, but I don't want to muddy the waters here.
Well, I appreciate that background. That's very helpful. Given the connectivity between all of these three issues, 23-112, 23-113, and 23-114, do we want to consolidate this? Is there a motion to consolidate this? Anybody interested in doing that? I would accept one if anybody wants to. Otherwise, we can do them individually. Okay, we have, we have a motion, we have a second. So I guess we are moti, having a vote to consolidate these as one single vote. So all those in favor of the consolidation?
Discussion?
Oh, excuse me.
Can we hear the rest of his presentation?
Yes, sure.
And then vote on all three.
Sure, that's fine. Yes.
Can I speak to the other two?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
Yep.
Wonderful. For license allocations, obviously subject to change since we hope to be presenting language related to a conservation closure that could impact a portion of the shellfish flats, but we are sticking with the unlimited resident licenses and 25 non-residents, of which 20 are just regular licenses and five are earmarked for seniors. We're also proposing one resident commercial license and one non-resident commercial license. While you're mulling those over, I will say that in licensing fees, we are proposing to abolish the conservation fee, in all honesty. Again, well-intentioned. When we had the conservation fee in lieu of the license fee, you know, so the license fee was actually zero, so non-resident and resident licenses became the same. Also, because they're not license revenue, created a bit of a financial nightmare for actually tracking receipts and how to account for those revenues versus license revenue. Well-intentioned, eliminated. Modify from the zero with the $10 conservation fee to a $20 resident license, $40 non-resident recreational license. And then for the commercial, it's 110 for commercial resident license and 220 for commercial non-resident. We did clarify. We did clarify that it's zero dollars for seniors. Uh, in some cases, seniors were still being charged the conservation fee. Wasn't the intent before, but sort of an unintended consequence, so we cleaned that language up. And then, of course, eliminated the categories for monthly and junior licenses. That's it, sort of summarily, uh, but I'm prepared to answer any questions.
That's, that's great. Um, so is there any discussion, if you don't mind just holding on for one second? Um, is there any discussion about consolidating these three issues? We don't need to vote on them individually, but just simply a motion to consolidate these three? Any questions with that? Okay. So, uh, I believe we had a motion and we have a second on that. So is there any, before we vote on the consolidation, any comments from the public about that consolidation? Seeing none. Okay, so all those in favor of simply consolidating these three issues? Okay, that's unanimous. Um, and those items, just for, uh, the record, are to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to chapter twenty-three, Shellfish Conservation of the Cumberland Code, as recommended by the Shellfish Conservation Commission, uh, which Mike has been talking about. Uh, twenty-three dash one-one-three, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to chapter eighty-four, which relates to the fines and fees. Section nineteen, Shellfish License of the Cumberland Code, as recommended by the Shellfish Conservation Commission. And finally, twenty-three dash one-one-four, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on the twenty-twenty-four Shellfish License allocations, as recommended by the Shellfish Conservation Commission. So with those three items consolidated, is there any, um, discussion on any of those substantively, uh, from the public? Seeing none, any discussion from the council on any of those proposed changes either to the ordinance itself, to the, um, the fines and the fees being revised, or to the allocation numbers that were presented? Okay, seeing none. Um, I guess I would welcome a motion from anyone to move forward.
I would move to consider and act on amendments under, or not, under, um, item twenty-one, twenty-three, one-one-two, twenty-three, one-one-three, twenty-three, one-one-four. And to consider them as a group, uh, I move to adopt all three of them.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the background.
Forward to seeing you at the next Shellfish meeting.
Thanks again. All right, and thank you everyone for consolidating those, it moves things along nicely. Um, next on the agenda is twenty-three dash one-one-five, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on setting sewer user fees for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Chris, I may ask for a little background here, I know Bill is not here this evening. Um, he had planned on presenting a little bit, um, on some of those, those, uh, capital improvement projects that are happening in Falmouth, um, just, I guess, in terms of background, and feel free to add anything to this, but in terms of background, um, we are a partial owner of the, uh, water treatment facility in Falmouth. Um, Falmouth owns seventy percent of it, we own thirty percent of it. Um, and it sounds like there's been, uh, quite some time that some capital improvements have been needed and those improvements are being proposed now, which ultimately will result in an increase in the user fees, uh, for residents who use, uh, public sewer. Um, just full disclosure here, this is an enterprise fund, I know Shirley brings these up quite a bit, this is an enterprise, enterprise fund, so it is fully funded and paid for by the users of the system. Um, but it is also important to note that in the event that a, uh, enterprise fund does not have sufficient resources to cover its expenses, it's almost backed as a surety by the general fund, which is obviously the, the Town of Cumberland's general fund. We have a, um, a reserve currently, um, i- in our, I guess it's our sewer reserve fund, I believe is what it's called, um, with several hundred thousand dollars in there for major issues if those come up, where we would be able to act immediately and have funds to, to take care of those. Um, and so it has been discussed that some of those reserve funds could be used to help offset or mitigate or lessen the amount of increase that will be needed over the next, uh, five or six-year period to kind of catch up and help cover these capital improvement expenses that need to be, um, done. The concern with waiting on any of these is that the longer we wait to increase the fees, the more we effectively tap in into our own reserve fund to help cover those, depleting that, that pool of available funds. Um, so I will stop there with that background and see if there's any questions, uh, from the public and, uh, then we will take it, um, at the council level. Please. If you don't mind just saying your name and where you live, we'd appreciate it.
I'm Robert Nup, I live in Hawksbridge. I was here on the, uh, last meeting date, when was that? September, uh, I don't have the date. Yes, I do, September twenty-sixth. Uh, there was a discussion at that time, the town manager, I think, did a nice job, as you just did, summarizing what the issues are. And I, uh, I disobeyed what I should have learned back in my most of days, and that is never volunteer. I volunteered to take a look at some documents that the town had and I guess the first excuse I have is a saying that procrastination is the thief of time. Uh, secondly, Bill was away for a week and I tried to get back with him and we didn't connect, so. My, my position tonight is that I think that it's reasonable to adopt the, uh, increase of about ten percent, six dollars and ninety-six cents for this year, knowing full well that this is gonna come back next year with another proposed increase. Surely by that time, I might have gotten the documents that I said I would review and can give you some ideas to what the documents are. And when I say documents, I'm talking about, uh, what I call inter-municipal agreements. Uh, I'm anxious to see exactly what kinds of controls our town has over, let's just say, engineering decisions or discussions or recommendations that are made by the engineers that serve the, uh, the sewer, sewer authority down in Falmouth and how much input we have and what the parameters are. As we all know, engineers have, uh, a track record sometimes that's not exactly stellar, so. Uh, my concern is that I wanna make sure that the citizens are informed. I wanna know what those projects are that are going to take more money and how they're gonna be bid and whether there's gonna be competitive bidding and all of that. So, uh, thank you for your time, I'm glad to be here and to, uh, participate. You've been very courteous to me. And I would close by saying something that my father said many times, let today's troubles be sufficient for today. Thank you.
Well said, thank you. And regarding those agreements, just to close the loop on that, I believe we did receive one, um, from the late eighties, maybe nineteen eighty-eight or eighteen eighty-nine, that I looked at, that actually was an amendment to earlier agreements that I think we're still seeking to locate through council, but I think they're, uh, in the, in the paper files somewhere, so. Those will all come, come, come up very soon, but I appreciate you highlighting that issue.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Um, and I do think there was an email, everyone, to, um, from Bill Shane, who sent out to us, talking about, we have a sewer appeals board and one of the ideas would be, I guess, very similar to the gentleman's comments about looking at this again next year, having the sewer appeals board, um, take a fresh look at this issue next year, gather some additional data and try to figure out if there's other creative solutions that can be done to try to further lessen that impact over time, that could be expanding the system, adding new users, which would help kind of dilute the, the, the percentage there. So that's something to keep in mind as well, that maybe we, if we do move forward with a ten percent increase, that we do it with the idea that this will be raised again next year with the sewer appeals board to kind of put their expertise on that. Do you have another comment, sir?
I'm a member of the sewer appeal, appeals board.
Well, wonderful. We would love to have you next year be part of that process, yeah, hired.
At one point, you're gonna lose me by next year, so I'm telling you now that at one point, we canceled the connection fees for, um, to build a more robust system. So we went a year or two years, I think, where we didn't, where the people who voluntarily hooked up didn't have to pay, um, the connection fees. They still had to pay for the work, but-
Sure.
Not those particular fees that are associated with connecting to the sewer. And it was successful in bringing more users to the system. But I think we've gone through that cycle and it might be time to consider something like that when you look at the future.
Yep, that's a great recommendation.
Yeah, connection fees, a while back, I think were about two thousand dollars and we reduced it to five hundred to encourage people to come on as well. And maybe that's a possibility that that fee increases back, similar to what you just said.
See, so Chris remembers, so you'll have him.
Did we have any other comments from the public? Please.
My name is John Law, I live at Seven Baxter Lane. So I appreciate, Mark, what you just shared, because when I got Bill Shane's notice and saw the increase, I said I must know why, and so capital improvement, understood. And I appreciate what was just shared and that we'll look at these things closer next year, so we won't just get into an automatic mindset of, you know, we got these coming and so on and so forth. So thank you for sharing what you did.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so, um, that's where we are today. The idea would be that we would use a portion of our sewer reserve funds to lessen the impact for, uh, the users to a ten percent increase for fiscal year twenty-four, with the idea that we would, uh, reconvene in probably early next year with the sewer appeals board, um, to have them take a deeper dive into this and figure out what can be done, um, possibly lowering connection fees or altering the, the formula for connection fees to incentivize new users, expanding the program, um, and things of that nature, so. I think that's all I have. Did you have a question?
This chart that Bill sent us doesn't show us using the reserve funds for this year, not until next year.
There's a, there's a typo. It should say twenty-three where it says twenty-four.
Where it says twenty-four, it should say twenty-five?
Yeah, uh, no, it says twenty-four, it should say October twenty-three. Are you saying in the, in the highlighted yellow section?
I'm looking at the yellow line.
Right, so he's recommending the ten percent increase for, to start in October of twenty-twenty-three. That should say twenty-twenty-three, not twenty-twenty-four. And then moving down, it should say twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six.
But still not dipping into the reserve funds this year, not until next year, so.
Good, no, good clarification. Yep, okay, that's great.
I was looking at the number on the, on the left, so I had it.
Yep, you're right.
Okay, any other discussion from the public? Any additional discussion from the council?
I'd like to point out that, um, sewer, sewer systems don't work real well in a rural community. And the best use of sewer units, uh, when you have compact housing and, uh, reduced acreage and reduced lot size. And, uh, when we talk about, uh, uh, expanding affordable housing, one of the things that brings that cost down is the ability to attract the sewer to it and, and make that part of a, um, part of the infrastructure. And one of the things that LD, uh, ten-thirty or whatever the number was, uh, when they talked about EDUs and, and, uh, reduced lot sizes, was the understanding or the anticipation that communities that had sewer would tap into them and what, that would be a part of the price of, of reducing the cost of, of housing. So, um, we don't have a, a lot of ability in this town to expand on the sewer until we have, uh, more denser neighborhoods or, or designated growth areas where there is the density that we can tie into the sewer. And by that long-winded explanation, that mitigates the ten percent increase or the twelve percent next year or by having more, more people in the system.
Please.
I just have a question for Chris, maybe for Chris. Um, is there, or Shirley, it sounds like, um, is there also kind of besides the connection fee, you have to pay to hook your sewer up to your actual house, right? And that can be kind of cost prohibitive to a homeowner, right?
Yeah, that's, well, there are, there's pay for the construction and then, like Chris said, there's like a two thousand dollar fee to hook up your house.
But I think the construct, or, because I asked Bill, because we have a leach field, right? And I was like, oh, I live on Main Street, it would be great to get hooked up to the sewer. And I think the cost per foot that he quoted me back was kind of bonkers. Like, it was almost gonna cost like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to hook up to the line. I could be totally wrong on that.
I think I'd go out and ask for some quotes for some contractors.
Yeah, I think they have to run the line.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So the, it, it's not, if the, the line ran right by your house?
Yeah.
It's two grand, that's it.
Got it.
And if the line ran by your house, you would probably be paying a monthly ready-to-serv fee.
So the, you're all correct. Um, the, the connection fee right now is, is five hundred dollars. So if the sewer went by your house, it would be a stub. You would be paying a ready-to-serv fee on a monthly basis to the town, but when you went to connect, you would pay the five hundred dollar connection fee. Then you would hire your own excavator company to come in and connect you, probably around three or four thousand dollars to do that. But where you're at, you do not have the sewer going in front of your house, so you'd actually believe you'd have to do a sewer extension.
Okay.
And I think that's what Bill was getting at, probably around a hundred thousand.
And so that's why I was wondering about what's cost prohibitive, prohibitive, right? And so if we wanted, if our ultimate goal was to add more users to the system, are most users in a situation like me? Or are most users in a situation where if we were to waive that fee, the connection fee like Shirley, Shirley mentioned, is that solving the problem? But it sounds like there's probably, this would probably be a great thing for this-
Sewer appeals board.
Sewer appeals board to look into.
Right, we still have thirty percent capacity in the whole system, so to encourage people to hook on, either that or we extend the system, but then you're looking at another capital cost to extend the system, so.
Tick, that's not a reasonable, I, I mean, I, I think it's very reasonable what you understood, because I, I thought, I used to think that the sewer ran right up and down Main Street. And then we had a gentleman on Main Street a few years, a couple of years ago, wanted to come in and put a project, and he was talking about running the line. But, and they showed us, it runs through the neighborhood, it runs across people's properties, and so it, it doesn't go straight up and down Main Street, which I thought it did.
Yeah, well, versus when we hooked up to Summit Natural Gas.
Right.
The line was there and it was easy, right? It was simple. Um, and so this is not like natural gas.
Yeah.
Understood. Thanks.
No, good discussion. Any other comments or discussion on the topic? Seeing none, I would welcome a, a motion.
I'll give you one. I move to accept the town manager's recommendation of a ten percent increase in sewer user fees for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next two items on the agenda are effectively setting public hearing dates, so not to vote on the underlying substance of any of the, the issues, but to set the public hearing dates. And we will move to twenty-two dash one-one-six, to set a public hearing date of October twenty-third, to consider an acting on accepting peaceful way as a town road.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Again, it's just setting the hearing date?
Do you know who's making the, the request for this?
So, good question. I just got off the phone with, uh, councillor Cop, who is, uh, not here this evening, but I think there was, that's something we should ask. Let's try to figure out if this is coming from the residents or coming from a developer. Um, but regardless, it's, it's my understanding that this road, as a private road, oh, I guess Chris has some comments here.
Yeah, Peaceful Way, it's up off of Blanchard Road extension.
Yeah, I know where it is. It's a dead-end road, right?
The developer is, is doing the request, they're jumping through the hoops now with, with us, um, making sure it's built to town standards. Um, I do a review with the engineer that supervised the project. I'll make a recommendation and then, right now, all the paperwork's with the town attorney for the quick clean deed and making sure we have bonds in place for the road. So there'll be a memo coming from, from me to the town manager, basically outlining all of this and recommending or not recommending acceptance.
We have not been encouraging dead-end roads to become public streets. So this kind of surprise- So this kind of surprised me a little bit. Ron and I talked about the same thing earlier.
Do we know why? Just out of curi, I don't know.
Well, it's expensive. It's very expensive.
For what? For snow removal or trash?
Snow removal. Then you have to do pavement. I mean, once they do the initial, they build the road to the initial standards, but then we're responsible. And I was looking at drainage, like I was looking at some of the houses on that, that road, and I worry that would get into drainage issues like we did on one of our more recently accepted roads. I saw some riprap that looked like it was being used for drainage away from a particular property that was for sale on that road. So I just want, I, I need a really strong recommendation or a reason why that we should be accepting a dead-end road. There are lots of dead-end roads in town that are private and privately maintained.
I don't remember the reason why. It was, it was supposed to connect to Cortland Court, but I can't remember why, but I'll get you that information.
Yeah.
And we do put a two-year maintenance bond on it. We hold a two-year maintenance bond that we hold as the town to guarantee any issues with the road or the drainage for a two-year period.
But you know what, you know the development I'm talking about up off Blackstrap, where we had drainage issues, right? That we ended up having to mitigate. So I want to be really careful if, if we do decide to accept this road.
And we can discuss the substance of those as well on the 23rd.
Right.
But
I just want to put that out there, so that whoever comes, comes prepared.
Yep. Any other, any other comments here until we set the agenda date?
As there is no application before us or, or any substance here, I, I think it might be helpful, the only thing that I would add is a review of planning board minutes, review of ordinances prior to seeing this item next time.
Okay. Can't recall if we had a motion on this. I don't believe so, but go ahead.
I move to set a public hearing date of October 23 to consider and act on accepting Peaceful Way as a town road.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second to set the public hearing date of October 23. Any other discussion?
If you're looking for local maps, it's not on there.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, and finally on the agenda, 22-117, also to set a public hearing date of October 23 to consider and act on an automobile graveyard permit for Cumberland Salvage for the period of November 1, 2023, through October 31, 2024. I haven't been on the council that long, but I do recall this coming up, I believe, every year as a part of the permit process. Again, we can get into the substance here. I don't envision there being any major issues here, but we can discuss the substance of it on the 23rd if, if we move to set the date for the 23rd.
I believe you'll get a corrected application. I noticed that they checked off that they're not over an aquifer, and they are over an aquifer, and they are actually volun, they voluntarily have test pits on their property that are tested and maintained by the state. They were one of the first to volunteer. So that was brought to my attention, that that was miss, maybe mismarked. So we'll have either town staff, Bill said either town staff will fix it, or they'll, they'll fill out a new application.
Okay. Please.
Shirley, and thank you, because I was wondering about that. That's the 5 billion gallon aquifer that we're frequently talking about. Okay.
And if you look at the main state aquifer map for that area, it says junkyard right on. So it's like, not hard to miss.
All right, so any discussion about setting that date for the 23rd? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Sure. I move to set a public hearing date of October 23 to consider and act on an automobile graveyard permit for Cumberland Salvage for the period of November 1, 2023, through October 31, 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous as well. Thank you very much. So that concludes legislation and policy. We will now move to any new business that counselors may have. I will start at my left with Counselor Vale, if you have any new business.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, can you comment? How did the new booth go with the Lions?
It was a, a overwhelming success. There was over $100,000, I believe, in donations in either kind, labor, actual building materials. The sales exceeded last year every day except for one day, and, and that, and last year was a record day, so it was, it was a great turnout. Great, great community really responded well.
Counselor Filson.
My three-year-old had a hot dog at the Lions Club booth and loved it. So thank you to all the folks at the Lions Club. We had a lands and conservation meeting last week. That team, as always, is up to all sorts of good, but for our immediate attention, we are going to reschedule the forest walk to November 4 at 7:30 a.m., and we'll meet in the back of Town Hall. I know, Shirley, that you're out of town, but we will take lots of pictures and notes for you.
I've done at least one invasive species walk there already.
Super. Well, hopefully this one'll maybe, maybe a little bit of progress, fingers crossed. And I've been, I've been revisiting and kind of thinking a little bit about how we, as a town, approach inclusion. And I know that back in 2020, back in 2020, the council had passed a really great statement around inclusion and discrimination. And I think that we may have the opportunity to update a little bit and, and tweak. So I've put together a kind of drafted a statement, which I'd be happy to read, that I'd like us to maybe chat about on the 23rd of October at our next meeting. So if, if you'll, if you'll hear me, and I'll, and we'll, we'll get this out to you guys on email as well, and we can discuss it, you know, kind of talk about this more in depth. But what I've drafted reads as follows. The town of Cumberland is committed to fostering an inclusive and welcoming community for all. Discrimination in any form has no place within our borders, and we vehemently reject and condemn any acts of prejudice or discrimination. We believe every individual, whether a resident or a visitor, should be treated with dignity, respect, and fairness, regardless of sex, race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, religion, age, disability, or any other characteristic. We are dedicated to upholding and protecting the rights and well-being of all, and we will not tolerate discrimination or harassment of any kind within the town. Our strength as a community lies not only in what unites us, but also in our uniqueness. We celebrate each individual's contributions and perspectives. Ensuring Cumberland is a place where everyone can thrive and enjoy a high quality of life free from discrimination is a mission we will continually prioritize and work to see through. While speaking up may feel intimidating, we encourage all residents to report any incidents of discrimination or harassment they may witness or experience. Our doors are open, and we are here to listen, support, and take action against discrimination in all its forms. Please join us in promoting tolerance, understanding, and empathy. Together, we can build a more equitable future for Cumberland. So I'd love to have that on the agenda for the 23rd, and then we could kind of discuss it in more, in more depth. And that's it for me.
That's great. Thank you. And I know you had sent out a draft of that. And first off, thank you for putting that together. I know you'd sent out a draft of that. Is there, if there's any tweaks, do you mind just sending out the most updated one for folks?
That's the most updated one.
Okay. Great, for folks to look at in advance of the, the 23rd. I'll go to Counselor Douglas.
Thanks, Mark. We had a great Parks and Rec meeting, Shirley and I, last week. Some great things coming from Pete and Patty. It's really awesome to be a part of that. Late November, you'll see recreation brochures hit mailboxes for January and April programming. They have some awes, awesome things coming down the pipeline for winter and summer of 2024, which I'll let them expand upon in the coming months. And then, exciting news, they'll be developing a playground subcommittee for Twin Brook, which I'm personally very excited about, for something coming in the next few years. That's it for me.
Thank you. Counselor Ead.
I'm good to go. Other than Chris, how'd the manager make out at the, the auction?
Oh, you know, I haven't heard, because he left the next day to go on his trip. That's why I wasn't sure. I'll have him email out a briefing.
Got it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Story King.
Yes, I was at the rec meeting too, and I knew Bailey would cover the more fun highlights. So I just wanted to let you know that Pete is working on ordinances for Sunday usage of the fields without, because occasionally something gets postponed on a Saturday, has to get them to Sunday, and there's a no, there's a policy for not using Twin Brook's Sunday mornings. So that has to be vetted out with neighbors and go through all the channels. And also for food, clarifying the process for, you know, it goes to, goes to Lions first, then Boosters, then, you know, if an organization wants a food truck, and then I'll be looking, I think, most of the food trucks that have done, like Lacrosse or whatever, they kick back 10% to the organizations that sign them up. So those would be things I'd look for in, in ordinance, so I'll be working with Pete on, on those things. And then a quick reminder, if you're looking for something to read, it's getting cold. The book sale at the library begins on Thursday, and it happens Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then Tuesday with whatever's left. You can go and get a bag of books for a donation, so you might want to get some winter reading piled up. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. All I have is just a, kind of to play on Counselor Ead's question earlier about bulky item pickup week. This is bulky item pickup week, so if you see things out in the street or in your neighbor's yard, it's not that they're terrible neighbors, it's that they're just getting things out of their house to get ready for winter. This will be the second to last of these, so there is the final one that will be in the spring of 2024 for folks as well. But that's this, this week, generally speaking, the crews should be there on the day that they normally pick up the, the trash on, on your street. So did you have anything else to add on that, Chris?
Not on that, but I just got an update. Four pigs, two steer.
Four pigs, two steer. Okay. And that is all, that is all I have. Thank you, everyone, from the public who came this evening, and thank you, Chris, for filling in. And Brenda, as always, thank you. Welcome back. I will happily accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Yahoo!
Yahoo!